Fifty-three.
Fifty-three years, a lot of three years.
Wow.
And, yeah, in some cases. And so essentially, as many of you may know, I'm not sure at all, but many of you may know, for fifty-two years, Duto has been using the driveway and parking area across the street, which for most of that time was owned by Lucy Cosmero. Lucy passed and it went on to another buyer, Sam, who had it from twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-two. And then in January of this year, it was purchased by Samuel Strausser and Sarah Bauer. And they, well, Samuel, and this has been kind of an ongoing email back and forth with some in-person and some phone, and essentially, he wants to work up an agreement with the Duto to allow us to use the driveway. And the agreement has been a kind of rolling goalposts where it kind of changes depending on what time we talk to him. And essentially, the bottom line is that the Duto is not allowed to access that property with, through the driveway as we've done until an agreement is made. So, the thought was that it was a borough issue being borough property leased by the Duto. And so that's how we have, the borough solicitor, Deb Huffman, is involved. And it's something that we're trying to kind of establish whether it is indeed a borough issue or should Duto have to take it on. We have requested on more than one occasion to Samuel some sort of a proposal in writing, and have yet to receive one, and he's not being cooperative with the borough. But he has said that he wants a meeting of the Duto membership. And the concern for us is that he has implied, or more than implied to me in some meetings, that he wants the Duto essentially to take on the payment for repairing the driveway. Which, my feeling is that it's not actually our responsibility in his driveway, which he purchased with the two buildings in the front. And, you know, he asked about covering for some legal coverage regarding Duto events in his parking lot and driveway, and we have no issue with that. We're totally open to that. And Jeff looked into it with our insurer, and the insurer said, yes, we can work that. And originally, he had just requested some maintenance payment for the driveway, which we thought, you know, it's reasonable, we're using the property, we can kind of work something with that. But then it just seems to be escalating with each time we talk. So, so that's kind of where we are right now. But we have a season that's rapidly approaching, and it's already starting to impact our season that we don't have the driveway. We do have an easement to the left of the driveway, and that is a plus and a minus, because it kind of changes some options. But it is a small easement, about eight to ten feet wide, and leaving up, leading up to a small parking area up top. So that's not really a solution, an ideal solution for our needs as a, you know, community museum and art gallery that draws a fair number of people during openings and other special events. So.
And how many parking spaces would we legally have with him closing off the driveway? How many cars could actually park there?
We haven't quite counted, it's not marked out, but our estimate without parking on the grass behind the building is six to eight cars. And that leaves very little room for movement and maneuvering for cars to get back down the easement. And the easement, you could either go up or down, but you can't do both at the same time.
And the sign, the Duto's sign is an issue also.
The Duto's sign, which we do believe is, we don't know for sure, but we do believe is likely on his property as well. And he didn't bring it up early on, but in the last few communications, he has brought it up, that it's on his property.
What's your view, Susan, start?
We have two private shows that are starting in mid-May, so two months essentially from today, almost. And so we have two private shows, the second and third week of May, and then we open Memorial Day weekend.
So now, if we were forced to use that sort of dirt path easement to get a car up there and a car back, we'd also be forced to walk that path?
Yes.
So, you can't walk that path and drive the four cars, you can't turn around?
Not safely. And I think using that easement would likely increase the risk of, you know, accidents, fender benders, whatever else, because it'll be heights, faces involved.
Can a oil truck get up that easement?
Not as I doubt it.
You guys own oil at the gas line?
What's that?
Do you all have oil at the gas line?
No, we have oil.
On the other side, next to Jake's house. It's actually Jake's driveway.
No, I mean, you guys have oil, you get oil?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah.
So you wouldn't be able to get an oil or utility truck up there?
Up that way, I wouldn't recommend it.
Terry, your efforts to try to negotiate with him, he stonewalled you, and he doesn't want the borough involved? Do you want to talk to that or speak to that? Did he say something? He doesn't want the borough, he wants to deal with you guys?
Yeah, he made it pretty clear that he doesn't feel this is borough business and doesn't want the borough involved.
Well, I don't see how he, that we cannot be involved with the borough since we don't own the property.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's kind of been the question.
And, and we've used this for fifty-three years, and prior to that, the Stroudsburg School District used it for how many years? I don't, I don't see how, it just seems like there should be some kind of...
There is.
Well, as far, when I look at it, I say, you know, I could go to my neighbor, where I live up there in Shepherd Avenue, and say, I don't want you to use this property, it's my property, and by the way, get off my property. And I would still do the same thing I had done the week before, and the month before, and the year before, because what weight does he have to say, this is his property, or tell us, we can't do this and we can't do that? Now, in a perfect world, I would, personally, if I faced it, I would say, I would do the same thing I did before, because I don't want to start to have a precedent that, oh, you guys were negotiating with me, you guys were this and that and the other thing. But this is the area of lawyers, and I believe as a first step, we need to commit our solicitor or some legal, some legal people to take on this project. Not you, not me, but even if we have to get a dedicated lawyer to do it, or get someone else to take this and move with it.
I need an attorney that's very versed in real estate, you know?
So I, I think we should stop trying, not negotiate, not discuss, not any of those things, and, and, and have a lawyer that's going to handle it, and we, the council lawyer, have to commit to giving that legal help.
In terms of a legal update, Mr. President, I know you had your hand up, but in terms of a legal update, I emailed Deb Huffman today, and she got back to me with an update, and she said that she has a phone call into Strausser's attorneys, and she's waiting to hear back from them, so.
But do we have a commitment, I think we need to have a commitment, maybe at the next meeting, that we will undertake this, and we believe that that's our property, and...
Well, I don't think it's our property, but we need the easement.
Yeah, I think the problem is...
I mean, even the back way up is, is owned by Don Small. You know, it's not that we have any, that ten-foot alley.
The only shot we have is adverse possession. And they would have to declare the easement we currently have as being adverse. For example, the oil truck can't safely get up and down there, people can't walk up there safely. It's all a legal issue. But I agree with Bill, I think, you know, the borough owns the property, the Duto shouldn't be in a position to have to try to negotiate this. This guy needs to come to us, or we need to come to him. But we need to have an attorney, and it's, it's going to boil down to what's black and white and legal. But I think this guy, understanding he joined the Duto Museum, he and his wife, it wouldn't hurt if some people showed some dislike or whatever, or had conversation, that, you know, what are you doing? You know, what, what is your endgame here? I mean, is the, does he want to put his own art gallery in that building someday? I mean, I don't know what he's trying to do. You know, I hope that's not the case. But I think what it boils down to is, we need to have, like Jamie said, to either get a real estate attorney, or if Deb doesn't want to do it, or a solicitor now, we need to have somebody that can deal with it appropriately, because it's all going to come down to what the courts decide. That's the issue. You know, unfortunately, in hindsight, we never had the, the original owner give us a right-of-way easement.
Well, Lucy always was going to do that, and it didn't happen, unfortunately.
But hindsight's 20/20, you know, everybody's living their life, and that would have solved the issue. But if it really comes down to legally, what can we do as a borough and the property owner of that Duto Museum and the easement that currently exists on record? Okay? And so the only argument, I think, an attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, Jamie, would have is that we only have an adverse egress and ingress right now, we need to maintain, you know, for all those years. I can't believe that the guy's doing this, but obviously...
It's not adverse, because we have permission to use it through that easement. That easement is actually standing in the way of us taking the land.
I understand, but it's not wide enough to bring in oil trucks in order to function and have heating system.
And have pedestrian and actual...
That's, that's the only argument you have.
But that's why, like you said, we need an attorney specializes in eminent domain and adverse possession to deal with this.
And, and the reason why we put this on the agenda is because we think you all need to be aware of this and understand what's going on. So if you have the opportunity to have a conversation with him or whoever, you know, he's not going to get a lot of support, obviously, from anybody.
And, and I, I think you don't want to start negotiating with him.
No, no.
If he has something, he wants this, he wants that, say, hey, the borough, for this very short period of time, the borough is committed to hire an attorney to take care of this.
I think it's been made clear to him that it's not a Duto issue, but it's a borough.
But I don't, I don't think he's going to listen until there's action on our part.
Correct.
Seems like he just wants to push as far as he can without spending any money.
Well, I think there's a consensus among council that, at the next council meeting, we obviously can't take any votes or action tonight, but, you know, the purpose of this being on the agenda is to inform everybody here of what's going on and what, what we can do and what we can't do. But that would be our plan at the next council meeting.
As a member of the Duto, I made the suggestion, because I know there are a lot of people that are associated with the Duto that don't come to the meetings, and are there for the openings or support it financially. I still think you should have a meeting and send out a letter to everybody that's associated with the Duto and say, by the way, you're going to have to walk up that path and park on the street to come to this meeting because of recent developments. He needs to hear, because I didn't even hear about it until, you know, you mentioned it off during some other discussion, I'm going to the Duto meeting, sitting there, you know, not knowing what's going on, and there are people that support the Duto that are not there for the regular meetings. People need to know what's going on. And I don't know if we have the ability to, but I think it's very bad for them to even continue to be members if they're trying to destroy the museum and the organization. I mean, how can you have a snake sitting in the midst of your meetings, trying to destroy the organization that everybody's working to support? So, I mean, if there's some consideration, I, I'm not trying to be mean to other people, because I, I considered them friends until I heard that they were doing something detrimental to the community. Because this affects the community, not just the people that, you know, work with the Duto.
If I can, I mean, if the guy's strong-arming it, and obviously, like you, you said, he's probably money motivated, there's other options also. I mean, one, we'd have to get a surveyor out here to just see how much property he does own. Two, I, I know for a fact, he just bought those two buildings, and his sidewalks are out of code. So that's a thirty, forty thousand dollar nut he'll have to eat if we push the issue. So if he wants to play hardball, we can play hardball back.
Oh, yeah.
So there's a few things, you know, that we have on our side beyond a lawyer, that we can push back and say, hey, look, you know, if we take care of this little issue with your driveway and whatnot, give us, you know, an easement, and let us use this, blah, 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 and I'll save you thirty grand, and it won't cost that much for us to do it, because it's something I can do myself to fix, but we can, we can, he doesn't know that, but we can push back.
But aren't we, are we also plowing that?
I was just going to say that. We, we plowed that parking lot forever, so we have already been maintaining part of the parking lot. And I think the owner before this guy now, didn't he dig that, those holes there?
Yeah, that's right, he did.
Yeah, he dug that up. And I think what, what you told me, Terry, isn't this guy had options? He wanted to know if the borough, or you guys would give him fifteen thousand or thirty thousand? He had three options or something?
Yeah, that was when he had me, we were talking one night, and he started talking about the driveway, and I didn't know what that really had to do with us at that time, but, and he said, well, I've been getting estimates, and there's a ten thousand dollar repair, and a fifteen thousand, and a thirty thousand repair, and I'm like, well, that's nice, what's that got to do with us? I think it came away that the strong expectation is that he was saying that, you know, Duto can kind, I'll work it into the lease, and Duto can kind of pay it down, and, you know, and it's like...
A nonprofit, all volunteer organization.
Yeah.
I, I think one of the strongest things you have against this, other than we, you just have to get the lawyer, but if we, if he knows that there's a commitment by this borough to try and maintain the ownership of that building, it'll go a long way for him to, it'll go a long way.
Yeah, good, Bob.
Jamie, I think you mentioned the magic word before, and that was eminent domain. If the borough starts an action to claim that under eminent domain, won't that get his attention pretty quickly?
Won't, won't that what?
Get his attention fairly quickly?
It may get his attention, but...
I would think he has very good reason, because it's been used by the borough or the school system for such a long time, and all of a sudden...
It, it will only really get his attention if we're able to be successful with an eminent domain claim, and I agree with you, it sounds like we may, but there are factors that work against us in eminent domain.
I understand, but if you...
And the easement is a big one.
But if you start that process and let him know you have started the process, whether it's ultimately successful or not, it, like I say, it might convince him to be somewhat more reasonable.
And if he's saying the sign is on his property, we wouldn't even be able to widen that eas, that alleyway, right? If we want to improve the alleyway, I mean, we really can't do that.
That alleyway is not fit for pedestrian and vehicles. So even, I mean, I don't know how that works in court, of course, a real estate lawyer would have to explain it. If you say you have access, it truly isn't access. If you can't get a utility, can, what if a fire truck has to go down there? Can it...
That's what I was going to ask, is he saying that you can't use the current driveway here, and it's going to block it off?
Yeah, yeah.
Or...
He said you can't use it.
I, I, I mean, we will use it no matter what, and he can't stop us, but...
Deb's saying legally, fire transition.
Fire trucks can go anywhere they want to, but technically, it's not a safe passage for car and pedestrian.
We would not really get down, up that alleyway with our helmet, no way.
So, I guess, I guess the answer is, we'll, we'll just have to explore an attorney. I'll, I'll speak to Deb this week, tomorrow, or the next day, whenever she speaks to me, and try to get a recommendation for an attorney that specializes in this.
So, so just out of curiosity, did he, did he tell you what he intends to do with the, the buildings? I mean, he's going to keep their coffee shop in there?
He has not, he, he talked about up top, kind of opening it up for midterm rental, kind of, not short-term and not long, you know, midterm rental to professionals, you know, up top, he was talking about that. Downstairs, he's been a bit silent, you know, we hear rumors, but otherwise, he's been a bit silent.
Well, I spoke to Kai, and he's been giving her a hard time with it.
So my, my point is, is that he's not putting something in there that, that's going to have to utilize every parking spot that is on, is in that lot.
Well, we're not even asking to use this parking area.
You just want it right away.
We just need to get in and out, because we have parking up, and we, when we have events, we have somebody helping for people to park on the grass.
And that was the thing, for years, when Lucy Cosmero owned it, like when we had the parking for Coda or, you know, Founder's Day, and we also gave, we always gave Lucy money, and that happened, you know, for decades, where we always, you know, said, thank you for allowing us and here, you know...
But when Trails Ed was open, we never used that space, because there, there was a time when they were open for dinners on a Friday night. We never parked there, and if we saw people parking there, we asked them not to park there.
The issue is, is this is a new buyer, he hasn't collected revenue in the last decades or whatnot, he's coming into it looking at, this is my property, you guys use it, the driveway's torn up probably from you guys using it, so who's going to pay for it? That's the way he's looking at it.
Yeah.
So, the only thing you do is, is, is if he's not going to play ball, is, is to push back and weigh any option we have, you know what I mean? To have access to that property, that's all we can do legality-wise. We can make his life a living out also by little things, but we shouldn't have to go that far. You know what I mean? It's, it's up to him, the ball's in his court.
Well, you don't want to, I mean, you don't want to...
We got to put a curb cut in eventually, and somebody's got to put a curb cut in.
Well, yeah.
It's not him to have stuff, I mean, we're a real charity.
Yeah, it's a ledge.
With that sidewalk.
It's an inevitability, but you understand, maybe leverage now, but I don't know what leverage it is, because it's got to be done anyway.
He's accused us of abusing that parking lot, the conversation I had with him, for all these years, we've abused the parking lot.
It's your parking lot.
Right, that's what I said, so he, he said, it's a million-dollar parking lot now, some comment like that.
And the damage that was done, the end of it was done by his lawyer.
Damn, I should have...
I'd like to point out, between our receptions and our meetings, it's three hundred and sixty-five days a year, we've used that about twenty.
Maybe five percent of the time.
Maybe five percent of the time, the rest of it is just, and that's just overflow. Most of the time, people start by parking up by the museum, and then, you know, we come down as like an overflow.
And it's very easy to mark spots and say, this is Duto, or whatever is restricted.
But this is not heavy usage here. And even during the week, except for someone, maybe Jeff going up and, and checking to make sure the heat's on, or, you know, people going up to mow the grass or something, you don't get a lot of people going up and down and up and down, not from the museum, not at all. On weekends, when we're open, eh, a few people each day.
Eight hours a weekend.
Eight hours a weekend, yeah.
Doesn't sound like very recent...
Only May through October, she's right.
Might have a hard time speaking to him in practical terms, he just doesn't seem like he's all there. Good, Bob.
Has anybody talked to Don Small about his driveway? If some agreement was made with Don, that might also be applicable to the other one if it was accepted, that might give you a little bit more leverage.
We've thought about that, but it's kind of awkward for us to get our people that are attending our events to drive down there and then turn left and go up that way.
No, no, you, you understand. All I'm saying is, now, some people come up Small's driveway to the museum area. If there's an agreement between the museum or the borough and Don Small for intermittent use of his driveway for those purposes, then that might give the borough more leverage when they're talking to him about his property.
There's also still the issue of the sign, if he wants to, he wants to continue adding condition, then he starts talking about the sign again. Where's the sign going to go? How do you even tell anyone that the Duto is there?
Well, part of the benefit of the sign is you get the drive-by traffic, you know, that stops in there to visit the museum, so it really is not to have the sign there. I think it's in everybody's best interest if we can negotiate something with this guy, and based on what you're saying, Terry, the only way to do it is to have a real estate attorney put something together, because he hasn't given you anything in writing of what he wants.
He's been talking about it.
And you've been asking for it, and it, and we haven't gotten it. So, you know, he's looking for us to, to play our card, but it's got to start somewhere. And I, I think we need to know before we negotiate with him legally, what are the, what are the chances of us being successful to maintain that, that right-of-way, where we currently have to get in and out?
Yeah, we're going to know our rights.
We need to know what we can do legally.
There, there is no doubt that that has to be maintained, the borough property for its present use, that is going to be a fact. We, we have to do it, we will do it, we're committed to do it, and if anybody runs into this guy, let him know that you, your thinking is, this is our school, this is our community, and, and not have it, have it any discussion that he may own the thing, and at least, no, you know where you're at, you're going to maintain that, period.
I think community...
We're committed to do that as a council, I think.
I think community-wise, Duto community and Delaware Water Gap community needs to make him aware that it's, it's our community, it's a gem of our community, and we don't like it, we don't appreciate being strong-armed and trying to do harm. Why would you come into this community and do harm? I don't, I, I'm totally flabbergasted still by the whole idea of it. Why would you come to a community, join what they're doing, and then try to dismantle it?
That property is landlocked, right? That property is landlocked.
Except for that, he's managing it. It's like this town has a car...
Generally, in your landlot, somebody, whoever can supply that they access the easiest, you'd pretty much have a right to that.
Yeah.
And you have to negotiate price, but...
Not with the easement.
Oh, yeah, that easement knocks it out?
Yeah, we have a reported, there's a reported easement, unfortunately, on that narrow driveway.
So you're not landlocked anymore, because you got access right there through the easement. The easement is problematic.
But the easement's unsafe.
That's another reason why it's problematic.
And we can't even improve it, it's not...
No, no, because then you're going into Jake's property or Samuel's property, or...
But I, I think he needs to know how unwelcome this situation is, to not...
I think he might find out.
To leave hard, I mean, Jeff and Terry have been fighting this, and dealing with this argument back and forth, and here I am sitting, I didn't even know about it, I go to the meeting, I'm sitting there, I didn't know that that was going on. I think the more people that know that and know, and love the community and the museum will speak to him, and, you know, you're going to get no love here. I don't care what you put in those buildings, you're not going to get any love if you come here and try to destroy the community. So, if you're trying to make money, you're cutting yourself...
I know somebody's trying to get in on it.
Is, is there anybody that talks to the guy that's friendly with him, or do you know anybody has a conversation with the guy? I mean, another one.
A lot of us used to be friends with him, but not anymore. I'd say a lot of us were friends with him, but, you know, now it's...
He was just at Duto Christmas party, and he was...
He did an about-face as soon as he closed on the property, so...
He has intentions of making...
The Dick on Hyde thing, I, I don't...
Is that Kai?
Yeah, Kai, can you hear us?
What are we going to do without Zach? Zach's the only one in those headphones on, not equipment.
Kai, you're muted here, but it's, you're muted yourself, if you can hear us.
I'm not sure.
I'll send her a message.
Yeah, Marty can text her.
She's talking, like her mic's going on and off, but...
She's muted.
She's muted now.
And I, I just hit the S tone.
Hi, everybody, I'm going to go in.
Are you there, Kai?
I'm here, hi.
Hi, we're all here, and we're in the middle of talking, discussing the situation with Mr. Strausser.
Okay, yes, Marty just gave me the rundown.
So are you having an issue with what's going on? So are you having an issue with what's going on?
Um, I am having personal issues um with MySpace, uh specifically, yes. Um, I'm also having issues with um. Delaware Water Gap, specific, people want, not feeling comfortable coming into MySpace because of the issues that are um kind of being addressed right now.
How so? Why, why are they not comfortable because they can't? Park or, I mean.
Um, just, just because there, there, a lot of people feel um unwelcome um with uh the way that they've kind of been treated throughout this, this process, I think.
But that's not by you, you haven't done anything to them, we're, we're unclear as to, to why they feel uncomfortable in your shop.
Um, because of the interactions that they've had with the, with the current owner. Um, I, I, I have three individuals actually who I will not name, but who um uh because of the presence of uh Mr. Strausser. Refuse to come into my store because they have literally said that they are afraid of, of the, the repercussion of that or having any sort of implications with him.
So he's in your shop regularly?
Regularly, yes, or they own the property doing, doing quote unquote work, yes.
Well, Kai, I, I can speak for myself, um, we support you and your business. And we will do everything we can to show support to you. Um, we feel like this is an attack on our community.
Absolutely, I can't, I can't agree more.
I think Kai has that, issues with access to, right?
Access to the parking lot, is that affecting you?
Yes, absolutely, yep, um, in my initial agreement, I was granted full access to the parking lot, um. I was told that I would be allowed to work with the Duto Museum and have special events. Uh, that kind of closed the museum, museum debt or the parking lot itself down and have um work with the Duto specifically to, to host um some sort of like market in the parking lot. Um, because I am like fully insured and in my, in my lease and um uh. My insurance pays for basically anything that would happen in the parking lot itself. So there's, there's that aspect as well that's um. Been uh now brought up saying that I, I can't even allow people to park that are, that are coming in as customers in the parking lot. Even though there's no signage that says otherwise.
Is there anything in your lease that says that you have full use of the parking lot or did it just say that verbally?
Yes, it is in my lease and I am working with my, my attorney actually, um, because of that.
Good. How long is your lease for, Kai, not being nosy, but do you have a long-term lease or what?
Uh, I do have a three-year lease, um, full disclosure, I am currently trying to get out of my lease, I, I will be staying in the Delaware Water Gap, but um. I, I, I personally, I um have not had very great interactions with Mr. Strausser. Um, that have been well received, I guess.
Well, Kai, I again speak for myself and I think for our friends and resident family here. That um we're in full support of your business and what you're doing here. If you hear, see any reticence from anyone from coming in, it is not because of your business. But if anything we can do to show our absolute backing of you, we will do that and we discussed before you got on. That the borough, we, we can't take a vote at this meeting, but we are discussing the borough's support. Um, behind the Duto because the borough owns that property. So um it's not just a, a fight of yours and not just a fight of our Duto board, but it is a fight for this community.
Absolutely, and I, and I'm in full support of the Duto as well, like I, I, yeah, absolutely, um.
Kai, is there anything that you think that. Is there anything you think a borough council could do to maybe help you out? I mean, we've, we've had a conversation and I already told you, you know, certain things about constructive eviction and whatnot. Nobody wants you to leave, we love that you're here, uh, but we understand that you're under constant stress and the rest here.
Sorry to cut you off, um, yeah, at this point, like again, I am working with an attorney, I will be staying in the Delaware Water Gap, um. Um, I, I do want to vacate the, the premises, unfortunately, I would have been there for twenty years had the change of ownership been to. Somebody that was level had been, I, I, you know, I'm not gonna say anything, it will, but if, if things had gone the way that I wanted them to, I would have been there for twenty years. Um, but there are things that are currently happening that, that are uh preventing me from doing that. I do have another space in the Delaware Water Gap, um, that I would be moving into, um. But yes, as of right now, the, the, with working with my attorney, we, we are also seeking to leave the premises.
If your attorney, if your attorney happens to see any zoning law violations in the building, would you let us know? So we could.
Absolutely, yeah, and I mean, right now, my kitchen is partially condemned, he did turn off the gas in my kitchen, so there is that, uh. That, that was presented to Mr. Strausser, um. You know, there, there are a few different things, I talked to Allison, I talked to a few other people about uh. About some things that are lease violations, so, but don't worry, I'm not going anywhere.
And, and Aaron represents you, right? Is it Aaron?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. D'Angelo, yeah.
I, I, I'm gonna reach out to him too and see if there's anything we could do to coordinate our efforts with him. He, he also, Aaron D'Angelo lives on, he lives up the block.
And Kai, uh, we're, we're very sorry that uh we're going through that, but we feel your pain. So uh we're, we're very like-minded here and, you know, and the issues involved. Hopefully.
Yeah, and I, I, yeah, and again, Terry, you're one of the people that I, I appreciate you, you and Marion very much, so. Um, I'm in full support of anything that I can also do, um, and if any way that I can help anybody, um, I'm, I'm here for. Duto, I'm here for the Delaware Water Gap, anything anybody needs from me, um, also let me know.
Thanks, and we'll, we'll help as much as we can on our end too.
Sorry, this is.
I appreciate your part, thank you.
Yeah, it is a perfect spot.
Anybody else others?
I think what it boils down to is at the next council meeting, we, we get legal representation and do what we have to do to make this thing work.
True. Well, that works.
And again, I think that, that anybody can tell anybody what's going on. Because we need to have a vocal. Um, display of disgust. I'm disgusted.
I tape all the meetings, so if anybody wants to see them, they're on YouTube, just type in my name, Desiree Sienna, and they're there, unedited, straight through. They're just there for anyone who can't make meetings.
Anybody else others? All right.
I'm wondering how expeditiously things can start moving forward since we're going to be opening so soon and. I, I can't imagine how quickly this, this can be done quickly, but it's a very big concern.
If we, um, at our next meeting approve to hire an attorney and we have one that's ready and we know their fees. And we're able to retain him that night or her that night, uh, I can't see why they can't be up and running the first week of April. And, you know, we would definitely let them know that it's a, it's a, time is of the essence, that we have to get this resolved before mid-May. So they have a month to get this rectified.
At least have some paperwork flowing because that, the other thing is too, once she serves some paper or, or some, he's gonna have to pay for his lawyer.
Which he wants to avoid, he's made that clear.
According to daddy, he doesn't even have an attorney this morning.
Well, she, she reached out to attorneys, an attorney that worked for him prior.
Okay, maybe on a call.
And, and, yeah, and she, they have called it back in.
Maybe just an alternative, um, maybe discussing something with Peter Luck where maybe they can go to Shell Park and park and then. He can take the trolley over, somehow incorporate that with something he's doing, just as a plan B, just so they're not left in the lurch, just in case.
The intent is, we have our first meeting in late April and I will inform all the members who are planning on attending the meeting that they have to park on the street. And they have to walk up the easement and I, I'm not gonna smooth it, I'm gonna, this is what you have to do.
I would think, I would think you could, you could tie him up right away, uh, because you've already been using him for fifty plus years. Uh, I would think it'd be some type of a, uh, whatever you wanna call it, order that could be handed down, that, you know, you're still gonna use this until it gets sorted out.
Well, that, that access and I actually just now today, um, got. A Delaware Chamber of Commerce, Delaware Water Gap, Chamber of Commerce guidebook. And in it, they have, the Duto Museum had a page. And the last paragraph says, the Antoine Duto, this is nineteen seventy-three. And it says, the Antoine Duto School and Museum is open Saturdays and Sundays from one to five P M. and at other times for special showing. Turn in at the driveway near the Green Lantern gift shop in the village. So it's, it's been the access for the entire life of Duto and more than likely for the hundred years of the school prior. So it's.
But he might, I mean, the new owner might not have to, you know what I mean? He doesn't have to agree to that, if there's nothing in writing that we had, you know, access to it or whatnot, in writing that we were granted access, he doesn't have to. He doesn't have to agree to it. So it becomes a legality matter, which it's obviously gonna become, but what I was just asking is the driveway beside it, that's owned by.
Is that Don Small's?
Don Small. So is that our plan B? Can we talk to him? Can we widen it? Can we use that for now instead while this is going on in court, just to keep this place open?
I think you can use it, you've been using it all this time.
Problems, but I, I would just use it the way.
Yes.
Use it until you stop. Use it until you stop.
When they stop him from parking a truck across it, you know what I mean?
I, you certainly have a wall, I said, but when, when I, I look at it, you, you can't just sort of give up when, when you have a conversation. It's why are you on my land? It's not, well, I wanna talk about having a, a, um, some agreement, no. You have to get the agreement from me, not the other way around.
I can't imagine us having an event at the Duto. Nobody can pull in there and park, gotta walk in through a path and them actually being there.
But that's my point, there's nothing stopping you from doing that.
But them even showing up at an event and everybody's, you know, all us little old ladies walking up the friggin dirt path.
Or trading food, yeah, surely.
The channel thirteen at the end.
Oh, yes, yes.
I don't know, you guys have Bible laws up in Magic.
Lisa, members of the Y R community that know aren't too happy about this either.
From benefiting or profiting or, or whatever, taking advantage of the way they're trying to take advantage. They're members now, so there should be some sort of restrictions on the Bible laws as to what they could do to hurt the museum or. The ability to.
We are revising the Bible laws and uh.
That might be something to consider. It's probably up to the property.
The Duto?
Sure, why not?
He locks you out of it?
Do you know I sent the same thing for you?
That's why I was asking about the driveway behind it, we have to have a plan B because this guy could park a, rent a machine and just park it across the driveway and shut it down. So we have to have a plan B, permission from someone else to park it behind with that driveway. Let's get in writing that, that allows us to use it, blah, 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 so we're legally covered in the meantime. I understand what you're saying, but this isn't, this isn't like nowadays, everybody's freaking sue happy and, and we'll take on no matter what. Yeah, but if it's on his property, who's to say? That's what I'm saying, that's why, that's why I mentioned earlier that a surveyor has to come out, survey the property, just see exactly how much he owes, owes. And go from there, so at the end of the day, if he owns that driveway and, and till it's legal, you know, legally, you know, well.
Satisfied.
Satisfied, thank you. What, what the hell can we do if he parks a truck across?
It's all gonna come down to legal issues.
Well, wait, how could emergency vehicles get up there if he does that?
Through the back driveway that I'm talking about, that we need to speak to him at least so we have access back and forth, I'm just saying as a plan B.
Right.
Just so we have permission from somebody to use their land to make access to the property, I think, I think that's a smart move.
If Don, if Don Small gave you something in writing, you know, that we can utilize the driveway, that would go a long way. Not that that would be the long-term plan, but I think as a plan B.
I'll move it.
And, and as Bob Resney said, you have a little bit more leverage, knowing we're not totally relied on his entrance, although we would fight in court to get that entrance.
Yeah, but I think that by doing that, we're kind of undercutting ourselves in our parking.
Yeah, but now you do have access.
By saying, okay, yeah, you have this, then you don't, I don't know.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I'm not sure about that, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm not sure about that, I have to rely on legal representation.
We're gonna have to, yeah.
I think we have to get a real estate attorney that, that looks at all the paperwork and we go from there.
So I just have a question, because I almost feel like I'm hearing a couple different theories and ideas and possibilities, so just for clarity for myself. When Terry sends out the email, which will be soon, to the general membership of Duto. Is he telling them as of now, the next meeting coming up in April, you will park on the street and walk up the easement or?
I don't think.
Or, see, this is what I'm asking, or are we saying, is he going to say, go up the driveway as usual?
I would say don't even.
I'm asking for clarification.
That's a deep question.
I wouldn't reference it at all, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't reference it at all, it's very just.
Don't say anything, because most people don't even know what's going on.
I would, I would explain what's going on in the situation that he.
See this gentleman's reaction, is that we react.
Said he was going, he wanted it all or something, but I would just say matter of fact what he said, but other than that, I wouldn't.
The right. Horse's hand.
You know, that's.
Before this rough stuff, I wanna say, so honestly, on behalf of the.
Did you get an answer?
Well, I'm sorry.
Question, did, did you get an answer?
I, I'm, I'm, well, Jamie seemed to answer it and he's saying for now, not to say anything to the Duto membership for the next meeting, just leave it as is.
Yeah, I thought it was wrapped up.
To me, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of agreeing with Chris, to me, that is ownership, belonging to Samuel and Sarah, that driveway, even though we've used it. For over fifty years, but does he have legal authority right now? Or in the, la, last Wednesday of in April, does Samuel have legal authority to tell us all to get off his property?
But he has.
Another good question.
So would he do that in the meeting? So if we have the Duto, you have the Duto meeting, we all drive in and go in as usual and in that meeting, we address this situation. Is he gonna send that meeting and say, by the way, all of you need to get out of here and move your cars?
What, what I'm asking is, does, at that time, will he have legal rights to do that?
I don't think he can say it.
Anybody can say anything, he's gonna need some sort of or, or, or some sort of something with some legal impact.
I'm sorry, but there, but there's no legal postings anywhere in the property that say that there is private property. There's also no word express that you cannot park there.
But he has sent an email directly to Terry stating that.
Okay.
Until there's an agreement, we are not allowed to go up that driveway.
So I would think that my question would be that. Since there is no legal postings on the property itself.
Right.
Stating that, then can you just continue business as usual? That would be mine. I mean, I, I had people still park back there because it doesn't say private property, no private property.
I mean, there's no posting, even if you tow it, you, you have no legal.
You, you have it in your lease that you're allowed to use the parking lot, you're paying insurance to use the parking lot and he's still trying to deny you access.
Can, can we, can, can we, can we answer with her, her question on your end? And what was it again?
So basically, like I said, I'm hearing two different.
No, no, we wanna give it down to ones, good question.
So bearing in mind that Terry has received an email from Samuel, the current owner, okay, of this driveway, parking lot, those two buildings. That he does not want Duto to use that driveway until an agreement is reached, even though we've asked for agreements now four or five different times, even from Deb and still has not seen one. My concern is Terry's gotta send out an email, one way or the other, and I was hoping Deb was gonna be here tonight to kind of give us some more answers, but. Does he tell the membership for our very first meeting, the last Wednesday of April, does he tell them, that, A, does he say anything at all? Is what Jimmy, Jamie was saying. Or does he send out an email saying, because of the situation, it's still pending, we have to use the easement? Or does he say, continue to use the driveway?
Or there is another option, which Jamie alluded to, where basically I inform everyone at what Samuel said, that he doesn't want DuTo using the driveway. Until an agreement is reached, no agreement is reached at this time, and me not instructing the members how they wanna get up to the DuTo.
Then everybody.
I think we don't say anything to everyone.
But they need to know that they have access to go up the easement, because that easement is very deceiving, because that looks like Jake's driveway, and he uses it to go and park. It, well, it's, it's an easement, belongs to the borough, okay? But Jake uses it, and he, he full well knows this. So if you don't inform the members out there that aren't in the community. What are they gonna do? Will they all just go up the driveway?
Yeah, we're gonna do as, as usual.
I don't know with that, they're gonna end up parking on his property, so it's absolutely a parking phase.
I think she's right.
Cause I think by telling people to park on the street and walk up that easement, we're kind of like giving him more power to.
I feel the same way, I don't know whether it's legal, but.
That's the part I'm worried about, is it legal?
Well, that's what I'm worried about.
Because we, we, if we play dumb to the situation when we're aware of the situation. I know, but we're aware, this gentleman said you can no longer use it. So now we're aware that he's saying no, we can no longer.
Terry, Terry can't use it, he has to park on the street. The rest of us don't know anything about it.
Is that an answer that's clear for you now? Everybody, where, where it goes.
How do we get the situation, though, out to the rest of the people that are affiliated with?
He's gonna put an email out, I just want a clarity as to what should he say in the email to the DuTo?
Well, I will make them aware of the situation, and I will make them aware of what the new owner stipulated, his desires. That DuTo not use the driveway or parking lot. And that's where I will leave it.
But as a member.
You're gonna get questions.
Yes, they're gonna say, well.
People are gonna say, what should we do?
Right.
And then I would just say, we're waiting for legal guidance, be guided accordingly. I mean, do what you think is right. And that's it. Does he have access to email everyone, just like you do? He is a member. So then, you know, him, he, he could tell everybody, don't park there, he just told you. So why didn't he tell everybody else not to park there? He could've done that just as easily. So don't, he's using you as an agent, he doesn't have to, he could do it himself. He only told you allowed to use it. So I, I don't think there's any restriction on anybody else.
The only thing that could occur is the night of the meeting, there could be signs up, no parking in this area, I can picture this full of.
I, I would hope you wouldn't put those signs on our property.
Well, there's a sign ordering, so.
By the sign ordering, it's a burden.
Might be a windy night, that night, you never know.
Shall we invite the zoning officer to the next DuTo meeting?
Well, Chris, you know, the trucks have been hitting a lot of signs around town.
That's true. Maybe I'll have him turn around in his driveway next time.
Can we move the detour sign if?
That Mars bus back, the one that got stuck down.
Terry, when do you have to send out the email for me? Um, I'm probably gonna do it within the next week. I mean, you could call Deb too and send it to everyone.
And I don't believe the email was just directly, Terry, you cannot use that driveway. It was the whole DuTo membership.
And I think you should also make a concerted effort to support Kai.
Absolutely.
If we have to, you know, even if you're not a coffee drinker, go in there and get something, a sandwich or something. I'm gonna go, I wanna make, put on, make a note to myself, get in there.
We'll be there tomorrow, Kai.
We have a meeting, we have a.
Park in the parking lot when you.
It's gonna be busy.
Yeah, everybody park in the parking.
Anything else on this? Anybody else on this one? Next is Fire Department S C V A updated.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
We'll get on top of this. By next month, by next month's meeting, we'll have, hopefully have better guidance.
Thank you very much, Council, for taking this on for us.
Yep, you're welcome.
We are, just to put it one time. What'd you say? We are, the building, the building.
Oh, the community?
No, 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 never mind. As soon as I walk out the door, there's a sand back in the yard.
You're relieved.
It must've been good, cause I.
Cultural, a cultural center, a culture.
It is.
Really is.
Thank you.
The, the, the fire pack, the fire department stuff there, we wanna get a little update for the community on, on what's going on. I think most of us are aware, uh, that they need air packs. The borough was asked for some monies for that. Howard's in a situation where he's trying to get the air packs, some of the members of the community have tried to reach out, uh, for potentially used air packs and so on. I had asked from the beginning to try to get the terms of the loan, because that's what I worry about. I don't worry about just procuring them, is the fire company gonna be able to afford to make the payments, uh, to maintain them, they're not cheap. The, the sixteen, if I can just speak to that, and I'm gonna turn it over to Howard, uh, as to what was discussed at his meeting and conversations he had, uh, with Jim Ferrari, the treasurer. But the reality is, uh, the bank in Kansas that offered this loan for the monies to the fire company. To get the hundred twenty-six thousand purchased, a hundred twenty-six thousand, two thirty-seven. There actually, it's a lease agreement, okay? You don't buy the equipment and get title to that equipment upfront. This lea- this bank acts as a leasing company, and they're the lessor to the fire company, which would be the less seed. Now, depending on the terms, they would take five or seven years. If for any reason, they missed an annual payment, and they were only an annual payment, which is another thing I, I was concerned about, worried about, because depending on the down payment that they could come up with. It would be seventeen to twenty-seven thousand dollars once a year for them to pay to do that. That puts an extreme burden on their, their situation. So, long story short, uh, Jim Ferrari, who's a treasurer, reached out to East Strausberg Savings. Uh, East Strausberg Savings in the past has given the fire company favorable financing for the command vehicle and some other things. Much better situation there, we would, they would get the loan, they would own the equipment, they wouldn't be at risk to lose it, it would be a monthly payment and so on. We don't have the terms for that yet or anything else, but boy, it's a home run in my view, if we can deal locally with like an E S S A. Now, at the same time, and I don't wanna steal all your thunder, Howard, but at the same time, uh, Jamie, I know, has filled out an application to try to get a grant from E S S A. Towards the fire, fire equipment as well, as you know, E S S A gives a lot of money out for a lot of different things throughout the Poconos. So that's already.
E S S A Foundation.
E S S A Foundation, so that's in process. In addition to the other grant that you have applied for, that you wouldn't go till December. So, Howard, I'm gonna turn it over to you, unfortunately, I couldn't make the meeting Monday night, the business meeting they had, so I wasn't aware of everything, but if you wanna bring us up to speed. Cause I know you also explored other options with Pocono Township and so on, so why don't you speak to that, so everybody knows.
Yeah, excuse me for not standing up. So we, we had our meeting, we did meet with Pocono Township, uh, we went up, looked at their packs, they're usable packs, um, did you have some heat damage and, um, they're used, basically. They do have ten good packs that are newer, and then they have six older ones that are a generation before. They're, like I said, they are usable, they'd still be using, but they didn't get the grant right now. All right? I did, uh, talk with Mike for quite a, quite a while, cause he was a little upset, so we had to smooth it over some. And, uh, they agreed to sell us the packs if, if we chose to purchase them for four hundred dollars a pack. With a, with a extra cylinder. So we brought that back to the body, and the issue is that their pressures are different than ours. They have a twenty-two sixteen cylinder, which is larger than our forty-five hundred cylinders, they're smaller. Each truck has a bracket, each seat space or each pack space has a bracket that is only so big. And our cylinders are smaller and they fit in that bracket. We would have to replace every bracket that we have on top of that. To purchase the packs, then we have to purchase brackets, if we don't have them anymore, we changed over in two thousand and seven. And that stuff has been given away or sold to other departments or given to them. The other thing is, our compressor, our filling station is at set for forty-five hundred. It is maintained every year, and it probably can be adjusted, but it hasn't moved since two thousand and seven. All right, so there's a knob that changes pressures, we can adjust it down, you can adjust it up, it's been set forty-five hundred since two thousand and seven, we purchased the packs we currently have. So there's, if, if there were forty-five hundred, it'd be perfect. Um, so there is some issues that we're still working on, um, because we don't know how long the packs will take to get, once we agree to get them. I mean, it depends on parts, you know, cylinders. It, it seems to be that cylinders are taking longest to get, it took Pocono almost six months or more to get theirs. Um, but we did agree last night, there was a motion made, it was seconded and approved to purchase sixteen cylinders. Uh, sixteen S C V As with thirty-two cylinders. Basically, the papers I, I gave to Council. So Jim has, like, uh, Jack said, has gone to E S S A, and we're checking on local loans, and like he said, we have done, used them before for other things. And we have paid them off on time or early. So it might, it'll hopefully give us a better interest and also extend the payment, make it lower. That was my main concern, is the payment, to make sure that we're not going to debt and we can't afford it. So by extending that loan, you know, the payment will be lower and we can afford it better. And by that time, we'll be able to ask for, for down payment.
Whatever help you can get from.
Whatever help we can get from the borough and from the township next year.
Right, next year.
And it's a still possibility you might get that grant.
Yeah, absolutely, and like, uh, Jack said, we're working, I, I thought there was two foundations that we are, uh, trying to apply for, to get money from, for, for these packs, so.
Two beside the one you already have an application?
Well, we have the A F T grant already. Hopefully, we can get.
We're applying to two foundations.
We're applying to two foundations.
Okay. Now, also, the packs are good forever, correct?
Uh, the, the, no, the, the packs themselves, not, you gotta look at it as a, like a package deal. The pack is the, the bracket and everything you wear. The cylinders are separate. So the packs are good by N F A standards, which we have to follow, as long as they are serviceable. All right, so as long as there's a company out there that makes the parts, and when someone can come and service them, they're good, they can be good for thirty years. The problem is, the cylinders only last fifteen years.
So life expectancy is fifteen years.
Fifteen years and die.
So you'd have to.
Advantage butts about the cylinders, they're done.
So to be proven, if you ended up with fifteen or sixteen, every, every year or every few years, you wanna put some money aside to renew maybe five, five and five as time goes on.
Yeah, and we discussed that at our meeting, on, on doing that, every so many years, purchasing five cylinders here, five cylinders there, so they're staggered instead of running out all at the same time.
Actually, a couple of questions. So, if you were to buy these used packs, um, is it a company that's been around forever, like still in business?
Scotts, yes. Scotts have been around forever and they're not.
So that, I mean, that's a plus, right? Because it's a good chance you will be able to get parts at least for now.
Yes.
Um, my other question is, your, your, your filling station, your service person, are they willing to like give an estimate if the regulator needs to be changed?
Whatever fitting's gonna be adapted. Ever, absolutely, you can.
Okay, so I mean, cause you're talking about sixty-four hundred dollars to buy the used packs.
Right.
But how much more would it be to have the regulator change so you can fill the packs properly and the brackets in the trucks that you need?
Well, he services it all the time, I do not have a price for brackets or how much it would be serviced. Well, he services it every six months anyway, but.
I mean, same would say you're probably maybe looking around ten thousand dollars or less to get these used packs, the regulator changed and some brackets, right? I mean, just, just a, a fluff number, you know, something just to.
No. It could be around ten grand altogether. And those cylinders that they have are good for three to four years.
Can you talk about the size of the used ones that you can attain? When you get the new ones, what size will they be?
They'll be the forty-five hundreds, the small.
Is that thirty minutes?
They are thirty minutes, thirty minutes cylinders, yeah.
Is that what most of the fire companies have, around here, thirty minutes?
Yes, most of, most of them have thirty minutes cylinders, well, and you're talking about the pressure in the cylinder, it's not so much the, the time. Cause I might be able to use it for a half hour, where a boy can use it for forty-five minutes.
Yeah, women seem to breathe less.
Yeah.
That's cause our heart rates higher.
Women do better with the cylinders than men do, typically. It depends on a lot of things, on how much time that cylinder, how much time you have, on the work you're doing, whether you smoke, your physical condition.
Yeah, I know my cardio.
So, but it's, yeah, it's basically pressure in the cylinder.
So their new packs and tanks are forty-five hundred, they're a new.
So it sounds like you all work together and, and come up.
It's a, it's like roughly a ten thousand dollar Band-Aid for two years.
That's a good thing.
It is a Band-Aid, I'm telling you.
What's that mean?
We looked at, we looked at purchasing eight packs instead of sixteen packs, and if we purchase eight packs now, and then two years, three years down the road, we purchase eight more, and the price is only gonna go up.
Yeah, but the problem with that is, if you get some of these used packs and you get new packs, they're not compatible.
They're not compatible.
In any way, shape or form, so you have to constantly change the pressure on.
On cylinders.
On your machine, which is dangerous. I mean, I've filled nitrogen for airplanes, I know it's very dangerous to mess with regulators, but I, I don't, I don't know, I know.
Risk to explode.
Yeah, it is, I mean.
Absolutely, we have steel cages, it's, it's not safe. I mean, we have looked at it and.
But if you don't get the used ones, and, and even with the financing, changing the financing and other avenues that has been discussed. You still may have to wait six months to get those new ones, right?
Yeah, it all depends on, and he gave me a two-month window that they could have them for us, but.
Or at least.
Poking away to six plus months for Scott, so I, I don't know.
Even if you didn't get all of them.
I know Strasburg, I talked to Charlie at our rescue the other night, and, uh, he waited over a year. So, you know, it just depends, and he, and he's not waiting for the packs themselves, he's waiting for the cylinders. That's what's taking so long.
So what do we do?
Do they buy the films?
To take care of what?
They use their own.
We'll have to take, we'll have to use ones we have, and we, we also talked about having, uh, the guy come up now and have them flow tested, cause you can flow test them, the packs themselves, but you can't.
But that was.
They won't do anything with cylinders, that's what's.
But that was another thing that we had to have done with these air packs from Pocono Township.
Yeah, they would have to be certified.
They have to be sent out, you know, someone come in and test them, which we're looking at maybe thirty-five dollars to.
Yeah, it's not a lot, but it's just something else that has to be done.
It's another thing that we have to perform.
That we have to pay for.
Maybe thirty-five to fifty dollars a pack.
Can you use a forty-five hundred P S I tank with these new packs?
Oh, you mean with the, with the used ones? No, you can't mix them because the regulators are different, you have a high-pressure regulator.
I mean, a low, in a lower pressure.
High-pressure regulator.
I didn't know if that was.
You can't mix cylinders.
And housing too, they're different size.
Yeah.
But you do sound like you're closer to a positive.
Well, they're, they're working on a lot of good options.
I've honestly been working on this for, well, the department, not just me, have been working on this for a couple of years. I mean, we did go to other departments, we have looked at their packs, Warwick'sburg, we looked at their packs, and they were old and they were beaten. Um, and they wanted a thousand dollars a pack. And we took a truck down, we took a trailer down, and we were ready to bring them home, and they changed the price on, so we didn't do it. So we, we, we've been working on this for a while.
Here's what I tell people when I'm selling houses, it doesn't matter what they like, it matters what you can afford.
Right.
And if you get favorable financing that enables you to make monthly payments that are within your budget, and I'm talking about the budget based on that twelve to fifteen, or any year.
Right.
That you can automatically, that you paid other things, that now would go towards those payments. Then I for one would be forgetting new equipment, because now you have sixteen members that would, could use them, you have four or five training that could come on board, and you may get more. And the other question, the other side of that is, how many realistically do you ever need, and how? And the other question, the other side of that is, how many realistically do you ever need in a house fire? Not that you want to get caught short, if you had, had twelve people and they had to go in fighting and you only had eight, shame on us, you know?
Well, it, it, that depends on a lot of stuff. We had fourteen members here the other night, there was two that aren't certified to go in, that still have to do training. And then we had six that couldn't make the meeting, so there's, there's twenty of us. And there may be three or four that need to go to, to school for training yet. And we're only going to get more members, we voted one in Monday night as an active member, not socially active. We have a lot of social members, like we have at least twelve, I believe, social members too, that aren't active.
With a company that you get the, that you buy them from, what do they require as a down payment? What's the minimum they require?
Well, they, you don't have to put any down payment, you know, if we have a loan, nothing, so.
That's with the Kentucky bank.
Yeah.
I'm talking about ESSA.
Even ESSA, I think they would-
No, if we get, if we get a program from them, they may not require a down payment until they come in.
They might not require a down payment at all, but then, we don't know, we're on the hook.
Until we get the terms, is, the key there is no prepayment penalty. And that if you're able to come in with ten grand in January from this source or that source or Smithfield or wherever it is, you want to be able to knock your payments down, not just take it off the end of the principal.
And, and Jacob knows that I am coming back to ask him for, for next year as well, so.
Well, this gives everybody a lot more breathing room.
It does.
Think you understand the council, you can't write a check out between-
I understand a hundred percent, I do.
But also, now, we're all in support of the fire company, appreciate it.
You've got to understand our position, that we've been working on this and that, you know, it's our safety. Not, not so much me, but our guys, and girls that are worried about.
What about Smithfield, are they part of this negotiation?
Yes, Lucas, their treasurer, their manager has been very involved, he's sent me quotes, he's sent me some banks that I've sent to Jim. I got a quote from him from Drager, I don't know where he got it from, but I have sent that to our guy.
When the time comes, are they going to give us the money?
I have to go back and ask them, but Jacob has seemed very favorable to next year's budget, yes.
But it, it would seem that they have to be walking hand in hand, you guys, to do this financing.
Well, that's, I don't know about hoping there's a financing.
Down payment for money.
I'm, I'm going back and asking him again for next year's budget, yes.
Right, Tyler, we, we need a figure.
Yeah. So, we are, we are, been working on it, we're going to continue to work on it.
Are we looking at the one thirty figure or one hundred and thirteen for the sixteen new ones? Because Lucas said he, he found the company for a hundred and thirteen thousand as opposed to a hundred and thirty.
Yes.
So, it's the one thirteen?
I sent the one thirteen to our rep.
Okay. Because that's seventeen thousand right off the bat there.
I agree, and I asked our rep to look at it, and I looked at it to see what's different and why is it cheaper.
Were the same exact stuff necessary, was that?
Yeah, Lucas said it was, I spoke to him the other day.
All right.
It seems odd too, because usually they have authorized agents and they cover a certain area, they don't compete with each other, so that's going to-
And I understand that the price is lower, but in, in other things, compressed air has serviced our equipment from, as long as I've been there.
Well, the point is, where we get the best price, right?
Well, that's what I'm thinking, yeah, you get the best price and, and lower interest.
The same quality, the same exact stuff. Just like we're shopping, the financing, you need to shop the price.
Yep.
Oh, I appreciate everything you guys have done. And, and you, I think you need to think about if these things run out before you're able to get renewals, what can you feel is that would be reasonable and protect your people?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, and we, we, this is our hundred percent concern, has been.
So, I don't know what-
The thing is, it's about ten thousand dollar, you know, stop cap.
Ten thousand dollars for the stop cap.
Is that for a second?
And we have to retrofit every seat and every leg.
We have to, we have to outfit the compressor so that it-
Make sure it works, it's not, you know, it's a old compressor, you know, so.
Well, that may not-
Expensive and it could potentially not work.
And that's like, I'm not saying that's the option to pick, I'm saying, what can we do to, to make the ones we have?
We are, we are, we are looking at options of flow testing, some sort of operational-
Not used to flip.
Yeah, there's stuff we are, we are working on. And just the, the compressor and the fill station is fifty years old. We got it in the old two thousands from Blue Ridge Hook and Ladder, for a great bill of twenty-five hundred dollars, so.
Did, did Pocono Township, they got the grant, what grant did they get?
They got the AFG grant.
The one that we're, we've applied for?
Southern Stroudsburg, Southern Stroudsburg, but Stroud Township has been turned down for, for five years.
Okay.
There's other departments around.
Maybe it'll be out of turn this time.
It could be, you know, we, we just, last year we heard pretty early, but this year we didn't hear until January, which was odd. So, maybe this year they'll say, okay, we'll give them the money. I don't know, it's hard to tell. And we have looked at other grant records as well, so.
So, you voted to get the, the ten packs from Pocono?
No, we did not.
You didn't vote to get them?
No.
You're not getting them?
No, that's not completely true, no. And, and that hasn't been decided yet.
But they're in good shape, they're, you-
They're usable.
You, you can use them.
Yes.
They're not trash.
I'm not going to respond to that.
That's what he called them.
That doesn't matter, I never said it.
I know, he didn't say it, I'm just saying that, but he said it, that was very disparaging to another fire department.
We went to, from very productive to not, but I appreciate, appreciate your comment. Anybody else have any other comments?
I think you owe Pocono an apology.
We have already-
I appreciate what you think. Anybody else have any other comments on this? Anything productive on the SBA?
That is productive.
SCBA uptake? No?
That's all I have.
Thank you, Howard. Thank you, Jack. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, last item on the agenda is Act one sixty-seven, Stormwater Ordinance. We got some, we got a lot of information on that. It's just, we don't have any real guidance on how we could change our ordinance or whether or not we really have to. Deb and Missy are still working on that. I took a look at it and, and I had the same questions that Deb did about whether or not- If it's going to affect our ability to be a- Did you guys have anything on that?
Well, I was just looking at communication that came back and forth, I saw what Missy sent within the red, with the changes that, you know, are different than what we already have. And, and there's a fee schedule, you know, whether or not we change that or not, or whether we have to change that or not. But, but it was kind of left as a question that it's sent by Deb.
Is there a timeframe on this?
There is, I think it's next month sometime, and it might even be before the meeting. But, yeah, that's something that she should be able to do automatically.
If she can't personally, it's got to be somebody at her.
And right now, her, as of her last communication, she, she didn't have any answers, it was unresolved.
Is she waiting for Missy to get back with?
Missy didn't know the answer to them either, and she said Missy was going to the Conservation District-
Go to, go to the force of the communication and ask them.
Answers to the questions. So, once we get those, then we'll, we'll have to-
Contact them?
She'll have to. No, it's, whether we change it, we don't change it, I mean, we have to, we have to, we're going to have to. But they're waiting for the Conservation District to get back to us, and that's it. And I guess, you know, the big issue is access to that investment. But they're looking into that as well, they didn't know the answer to that either. And what are necessary conditions? All right, so, anything on that, anybody have anything on the Stormwater Ordinance? Anything else, anybody else, anybody else have anything to talk about?
Oh, maybe one thing, I have an update on the Wellness Center lawsuit. Apparently, Smithfield won that first half of the lawsuit, saying that the Wellness Center is allowed in an R1 district. And they're waiting on the second lawsuit, they don't have an answer on that yet.
They, it is allowed?
It is allowed.
No, they, no, the, the, here's, here's what happened, the, I got an email or a text from, from Jim. Peter Lehman from Bangor addressed in Commonwealth Court whether or not Smithfield was correct in the curative amendment. It says they're allowed to have that in an R1-
Right.
Based on, on, and that was Judge Zulik's ruling. The main lawsuit is the one that says it shouldn't be allowed as a conditional use, which would really give them the right or not the right to have the Wellness Center there. We haven't heard back from that.
Well, right, that's the second one.
Yeah, the curative amendment is a separate issue and it's a minor one, it was a long shot, and, you know, Jim Ferrari knew that, so Peter Lehman tried it, based on what was there. But just for, just so you know, the main one hasn't, hasn't come back.
Well, no, I just think the town should get an update as to the lawsuits, because you guys have never brought them up.
Yeah, well, that's where we're at, and I just got that text yesterday from Jim Ferrari, so.
All right, because I spoke to Karasak like two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Well, it's good, because with pending litigation, we always got to run through Deb what we can say and what we can't say.
That's, that's the other thing, you know, there's a sense of error, so we can't.
Couple of things, one is, Zach wanted to mention Makers Market on April first, for people to come out and take part in it. The other thing is, Pick Up the Poconos is April twenty-second, if anybody wants to participate, I think people, Tim has participated before. Just come, I don't know what time it is actually, I got to figure out the time, but just come here, and then Larry's going to give out the equipment, and we'll go clean up. And the other thing, the last thing is Meals on Wheels, asked for borough residents to participate in delivering meals on Community Champions Week, which is coming up, March twentieth to the twenty-fourth, I guess it's in a, a week, next week or the week after. If anybody's interested in that, they could contact, just contact the office and Alice, Allison will get you in contact with Alicia, who's coordinating that. So, those are the three things.
See you all at coffee. At the coffee shop. And we'll lauter around.
Was, was your work at the, the art show over in Middlesmith Field Township?
It's still there, it was, it's for women's history.
We went to it.
It's the, it's the pottery in the case, right?
Yes.
I knew it, so some lady kept hovering, and we went there specifically to see your artwork, we knew you were out of town, and just hovering and hovering, so we never did get to see it, but we're going back. But we, we did find Terry and Mary Ann, so, and the Higby's, it was in the wash.
And we didn't have a hovering lady, so we didn't get to see it.
It was a lot of good people that you know had worked in that show, I was honored to be included.
The show was amazing, the multimedia was great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I might have to give you all some of those pots, I make them in, I don't know, during-
Well, you missed our birthday, we didn't get birthday cards, but we'll take your pottery. Well, you missed our birthday, we didn't get birthday cards, but we'll take your pottery.
The cemetery had their second annual war dog ceremony, it was passed on by Ann and Gary.
It was great. Yeah, it was really good.
Together with Alpha, the whole Cemetery Association, and they had two trainers with their dogs from K-9 Haven.
Hero Haven, K-9 Hero Haven.
Hero Haven, yeah, out in-
Yeah.
Bloomsford, yeah, and so they were out, one was a sergeant, a retired sergeant who had served with a dog in the Middle East. And his wife also had another dog that had served on guard duty at embassies in Europe. And they gave the stories, and then we had some other veterans who gave stories, including Reverend Gonzalez, who gave stories about the impact of the war dogs and their experience. And one interesting thing that the sergeant had added was, not only did the war dogs impact their experience during the war, but after the war as well. Where he has the dog he had used in the Middle East, and that dog has helped him through some tough times since he's come back as well. So, it was really, it was a pretty moving ceremony, and we had about forty, forty, forty-five show up.
Yeah.
And three dogs.
Nice turnout, and you can see some pictures and stuff on the cemetery Facebook page.
It was nice.
Yeah, that's great.
Full disclosure, I can't fit my uniform anymore.
Well, we're giving time for Race Across America, where it can be slimmed down and-
I'll be on my motorcycle following.
Speaking of you guys going to Middlesmith Field to see that show, that just weighs on how important it is our own-
Yeah.
Our own center, that we are going to visit someone else, see artwork in another person's cultural center. We cannot allow someone to just-
Agree.
Lock us out of our own.
Right.
So, the fight is on.
Feel like coffee.